Call this Altoona City Council Work Session to order Monday, June 28. We'll now have a moment of silent prayer. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll now open the floor for public comment. If anybody would like to address council, you may do so now by going to the podium. If anybody would like to call in, you can dial the number on the screen. And when asked to do so, please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Chief. My name's Tom Forre, I'm an attorney. I represent John Helfrich. I've represented him for several years, as code enforcement knows. I'm here just to go over things. I understand I have five minutes to speak. This McCrory's building, John had great hopes for it when he purchased it seven or eight years ago. And he saw some photos, some pictures. All of you have probably seen him throughout the course of this endeavor. As you know, there have been numerous code violations citations issued over the years. John has attempted to correct many of them. He has corrected many of them with respect to the windows, electrical, things like that. The generator was removed. Things like that have been resolved. The major problems have been the roof and the major problems have been the water in the basement. He has explored that several times. He has had studies done, even with the cooperation of the city, with respect to the water in the cellar. As you know, when McCrory's had it, that was a productive area for them. I think it was Toiland downstairs, if I remember. Some of us might remember it, some of us might not remember it, but I remember it. So at one time, it was dry. The fire department was in recently and pumped out as much as they could pump. He had Caparuso Plumbing in there for the study of doing, putting some pumps in. They've indicated they thought that could be done. Right now, the major problem appears to be the roof. He recently had, he's had a couple of estimates over the years for the roof. 2019, he obtained an estimate, but from 2019 on, basically, he was shut out of the building to a certain extent. He was limited to have access. He tried to clean out the interior. He had dumpsters from Dutch's hauling. And he had COVID, he had cancer. Two of those things over the years have delayed him in taking personal action. But he is ready to do something. And he has had a, an engineering study done. You have had an engineering study done. There have been three engineering studies done over the years. U's Engineering did one from Phillipsburg. ABD, Gary Landis from Johnstown, did one. And the city had an engineering study done. All these engineering studies have indicated that the building is structurally sound. They all agree that something has to be done with the roof. He's willing to do something with the roof, if at all possible. He has attempted to procure bids on the building. He has attempted to see if anybody is interested. He has received two offers so far. Neither of those have even approached close to what he paid for the premises. He would like to sell the premises. He is hoping a developer would come along and take it off of his hands. He's willing to do that. He's willing to do anything possible to cooperate with the city. He would just like to have the opportunity to go in to clear out the interior. We, he just recently had an appraisal in. It's probably going to take a couple meets for the, a couple of weeks for the appraisal to come back to him. But he just recently had an appraisal, appraiser in and wants to get that appraiser so he can figure out what the value of the building is, as is, and what it would be with the roof. That's what we're asking for. We're asking for some time. I know that you might be thinking about doing eminent domain proceedings, and I'm sure you are. And it's probably maybe at the forefront of your thoughts right now. We would ask for, and again, and I know that just the editorial in the Altoona Mirror today, I mean, spoke about the necessity, and we know what happened in Miami. We do not believe that that building structurally is in that position. But that's, that's the way we look at it. And that's the way the engineers apparently looked at it also. So we're asking for some time. We would like to sit down, once we get the appraisals, possibly sit down with the city solicitor or representative of some city council to see if we could work out a solution as far as a purchase of the building without going through eminent domain. There's expense involved with eminent domain for all parties. And that's one of the problems. We would like to avoid that, if at all possible. He's willing to be reasonable with respect to it, once we get the appraisal in. And so we would ask for that. He asked the appraiser, appraiser to do two appraisals. Appraisals, one with the roof missing, the way it is now, one with the roof fixed. And that's what he's asking for. So that's, that's basically all we're asking for. And I don't know whether council can give that leniency to him at this point, based upon the history. The man has survived cancer, he has survived COVID. He tempted to do a lot of this work on his own. He shouldn't have done it that way. That's all I can say. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a que, like, who are you representing?
The, the OLC. John is one of the members of the OLC.
Okay, okay.
He and Kathy, yes.
Okay.
It's two member OLC, yeah.
And you, just to be clear very important, you're asking for time for the appraisals to come back?
Yes, yes. I would think.
Yes, and we'd like, ideally, we'd like to move forward to get the roof done. Obviously, that's important. It's a good time to do it, but if this thing goes into eminent domain, then the question is, who pays for the roof? You know, is it, how do we figure into that? I'm not a real good business person in that respect. But ideally, my intentions are that we'd like to get the roof done ASAP in that building. We have an architectural engineering company from Johnstown that have a specialist in water problems in older buildings. He did his block in Thomas Town, and we'd like to correct that. And at that point, we would like, like to sell the building to somebody who is truly capable of doing something with it. Because I assume that the city just doesn't want somebody to just, the warehouse to build it at this point.
What do you, what do you plan to do with the roof?
Well, the roofer was there last week. He took four samples of the roof. And data, and then the third floor, sorry, the third floor, we took down, see if I can take it down so you can see all the joists. Examine those, those are very solid. As far as the, the board structure underneath the.
Hold on a second, what, what?
You need him to come up.
Yeah, could you come up? I'm sorry, I was thinking about that and then.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, very good.
I'm also hard of hearing, so I don't know if I'm loud or not. So that's what we'd like to do, and then get into a serious negotiation with somebody who has plans for the building. We, we haven't had, in, the newspaper said that we had two offers, substantial offers, which is, there's no truth to that at all. We haven't had any, we've had some, like, people throw around some figures that were like the low rock bottom, which didn't make sense. And we had, there was nothing in pa, paper, and there's nothing that's been negotiated.
So are you saying, are you saying that you have not received an offer equal to what you paid 10 years ago?
Not near, not near even what we paid for the building 10 years ago. And if you incorporate the, all the repairs that we've done, it's way, when I say low, I mean rock bottom, okay? And they, and I basically said, because this is all verbal, nothing on paper. I just said, listen, that, that's not good, you know? I said, if you want to come back and talk, put some, nothing, no response at all. Basically, once they couldn't, found, they couldn't get the building for, virtually nothing. When I say nothing, I mean, like 20 grand, you know? That, they didn't come back. So obviously, they had no intentions. And also, the, I only know what I read in the newspaper, right? And nobody's really told me about these. But they didn't come back, and the newspaper described them as being real estate developers, and these people really weren't real estate developers. I think what the city needs is somebody who would pay a reasonable amount for the building and be able to put in, invest monies to make the building what it has the potential to be. Because it's, it still is, it still is, it's on the historical register for a reason. It's a classic Art Deco limestone building, the only of its type downtown. And that's meaningful to people. If it wasn't structurally sound, it'd be another reason, you know, and another question. But, but it is sound. If you look at the steel structure, I have photos with me. When they were building the building, they documented everything. And looking at those photos, you'll see what the guts of the building are. And those guts are still there. The steel frame is not rusting, it's still bright red. The joists are solid. There are some subflooring that should be inspected and, if necessary, replaced. Obviously, the roof, as Tom said, in the basement. There have not been, because I have an access to do something with the basement. I, when I was locked out, finally, I was in negotiation with Caparus, Caparuso, is it? The plumbers. And they, they had a clear idea what needs to be done. And because there are no pumps running now, obviously, the, the water builds up, you know? This engineering company, which I'm dealing with, they say that they have the expertise to, to diagnose and figure out where the source of the water is. Pumping it is alleviating the symptom, but that's not identifying the source. And that's what should be done. I mean, there's a lot of water downtown, as we all know, but there's always been. And as Tom said, there was a key part of McCrory's apartment store was shopping in the basement. So that's our request.
Counselor, you opened the door for us to ask questions, so here I go. I'm going to go to our solicitor. It's my understanding that the property was acquired 10 years ago, and it was $50,000.
That's what's on the deal.
Okay?
That's what's on the deal.
And I don't know what you've put into the building since then, but there's been water in that basement for the last many years.
Not like this, because there were some going on. Matter of fact, you were in the basement with Bob Scholl. I remember the day.
Yeah. And there was water in the basement, and there was a boat in the basement then to get from one side of the?
No, the boat was, I should explain the boat. Because it looks like we're fishermen or something, and that's not the case, all right? We, we built a ramp over the stairs, which are all terrazzo, going down to the basement so we could clear out the basement, all right? An old buildout. And the boat was an idea that somebody that was working with me at the time said, we have this small aluminum boat, we can fill that as a tub, and we would drag it up this ramp, which we did. We, I bought a high-powered winch, which we ran on batteries, and we were towing the stuff out. If you go to the first floor now, the stuff is there on the first floor because the intention was, get it up to the first floor, take it out. I had two dumpsters there, which I got from Dutch, last month and the month before. But because we weren't permitted to take the stuff out, the stuff is still on the first floor.
Who, who didn't permit you to take the stuff out?
Ken Decker, for one. He went, he went through the building, and I said, well, can we take this stuff out? We have two dumpsters waiting, empty, and he said, no. That was it. And his, his intentions for what they, you know, I don't know where they came from, but he emailed us, my partner in New York, that his intention was to tear the building down when he was done tearing the church down, which they did. So I don't know whose agenda that is to tear down the building, but it's not a new one. They've been trying to tear that building down long before I came along the scene because that's what they were doing downtown. They were tearing down buildings.
I don't, I've been on council the longest of anyone here, and I can tell you, since I've been on, it's never been our intention to tear down the McCrory's building. It was never our intention to tear down the Woolworths building, but that was left go because of the roof, and it actually collapsed then.
Yeah, and there were trees growing out of it, yeah. I have a lot of documentation about being notified by the city about the intentions to tear down the building, so I'm not, I wouldn't just make this up.
So I guess my question would be to staff and the directors. Say we did permit a roof to be put on, does this restart the clock on another six-month period? Where are we in that process with, like, the Code's Appeal Board? Because according to the timeline that Rebecca, Director Brown has provided us, 10 years' worth of, of items here. You know, this building's been red, red-tagged. The fire department will not enter that structure unless someone's life is in danger in that facility, in that building. You know, we're 12, we're 10 years into this. I guess my question is, do we, do we as a body really believe that another six months is going to rectify these serious issues?
Well, I would say, give us.
If I can, real quick, I would like to hear what, what Director Brown and the staff has to say quickly.
Permits are good for six months. We have the ability to lessen that timeframe based on the severity of the problem, or if somebody's making a good faith effort in repairing a building, we can extend the permit. We do that quite often. This is somewhat of a different situation, so I would defer to mayor and council on how you would want to handle a timeframe on a building permit. But it's generally a six-month permit.
Okay.
Would, that's a reasonable time. As I said, we, we went to the Code Appeals Board, all right, to get some time on this. Unfortunately, I became very sick and was hospitalized with COVID. And I'm not planning on being sick, but I was real sick. And I'd been struggling with cancer for five years. And if you know anything about COVID, a lot of people who die from it are people with a history of cancer. Because cancer, basically, once you've had serious cancer like I have, your immune system is never quite the same again. And I'm 71 years old. I'm lucky to be alive, honestly. You know, thanks to, I don't know who Dr. Kanashiki is, but he's the best of the best. And he saved my life, basically.
So I think that the worry about the six-month timeframe, I mean, from several.
Well, could we, let him talk, I'm sorry.
Would be that, I know that there are several members of council who are worried that as we get into the winter, things could get exacerbated or get much worse. So, I mean, Rebecca, we had had, Director, we'd had a brief conversation about the city's options to address the problems unilaterally. Can you elaborate on that a little bit, and to what authority we might have through your department?
Well, the city has the ability to abate a violation if it creates a public nuisance or if it becomes a safety hazard to the public. So the city actually does have the ability to remedy a violation, if that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, that, that's exactly what I'm referring to. So, I mean, is it a situation where we, you know, we could present a period of time, and if it's not addressed in that period of time, the city could go in and abate the situation unilaterally?
Well, I can tell you that the city's never undertaken any kind of violation that's this, we, not, nothing to this level, I should say. I mean, we really reserve that for more of, you know, trash removal or high grass complaints or something like that. We do things like that, and then we'll lean the property for the cost of, of the removal or the repair. But something like this is generally, I mean, I have no recollection in the years that I've been here that we've ever conducted a repair of this size. Not saying that we couldn't, I'm just, we've never done that.
I mean, we're talking about pretty extreme options in general.
Right.
So, you know, we've never done that to, but, you know, we're also considering eminent domain, so I think that all options are pretty fair to bring up on the table at this point.
You know, we wouldn't be opposed to waiting for the appraisals and see where the appraisals come, come in.
How long is that going to be, Attorney Forre?
Normally, two or three weeks.
Two or three weeks.
Who's doing your appraisal, Tom?
It's a, I'll get from Johnstown, or no, Portage.
Portage, yes.
Have there been appraisals done in the past?
No, I can't, but somebody wanted to buy the building, okay?
Yeah, there's one appraisal that was done, which was one of those low bowl offers. And this type of thing, they go towards comparisons, that's how they come up with a figure. And it all depends on what you think is a comparable property. And we, I found it to be extremely biased, basically, by somebody who wanted to take over the building for nothing. And you, what we can do is have ours done, and you compare the two, or have your own done. And I, he was, sir, your name, I can't.
Jesse Ickes.
Yeah, yeah, he met this fellow today, the appraiser earlier.
Yeah, I was in the building today.
Yeah, as well as Chief Harmon, met him too. And he's quite reputable, a lot of, he knows Altoona very well. He's from Portage, but, you know, then we can get a handle on things because I think that it's very important to get the roof done.
I have a question going back to the roof.
Yes.
Is your intention to replace the entire roof, or just to kind of patch it up and?
No, it's to, it's to replace it. It's to take it up, repair all wood, you know? I forget the word they call it, but.
Sheathing and membrane.
Sheathing, thank you, thank you, chief. Yeah, and replace, he did some core samples. He determined, but again, until they tear it off, not sure what the extent is. Essentially, one side is bad. And the other one, he didn't see any problem, but when they take it off, they might be a problem. And we're committed to fixing all the problems, putting new insulation down and putting down that black rubber EPDM, I think it's called, putting that down.
So your contractor has looked at the roof.
I, again, I'm.
Your contractor has looked at the roof. Your contractor has looked at the roof.
Roofing contractor.
Yes, yes, he went through it, and he took core samples of it.
So what is their schedule?
Here's the problem with them right now. It's like anybody else in construction. They're saying it's going to be a period of time to get the materials.
But, but they're not the only roofer who can do the job. And we, we will find the roofer to do the job. And obviously, if we don't, then our goose is cooked, basically. He's saying we've lost all credibility to this body. And we, and I understand that, fully, and my business partner does too.
Well, your credibility's been hanging by a thread. As is, that's the issue. I think I'm going to make my final comment here, and I'm sorry that we met over this, but after 10 years, this comment, these comments and plans ring hollow with me, and that's all I'll say.
You, you, the appraisal's already been in the building, and he's going to charge you for an appraisal at this point, right?
Yes.
Attorney Finn, what are the, if we pass the resolution tonight, what are the next steps for council?
Well, once you pass the resolution, authorizing it, the next step would be for me to prepare the declaration of taking and associated legal filings, which would then be, you know, filed with the peremptory's office, copy recorded in the recorder of deeds office. It has to be served within 30 days of it being served. The owner, if they want to file preliminary objections, they can. So what I can tell you is, eventually, where these come back to is, what's the value of the property?
Right.
And having handled these types of claims before, what's pretty common is, you know, like, the owner has an appraisal, the condemner has an appraisal. Ultimately, whether you're at a board of view or a de novo appeal before a judge, it's up to them to look at all this, and what do they think's the, quote, you know, fair market value of the property? The idea being, if I put this building on the market, what would I get for it? And that's where the appraisals come in. So from the standpoint of, you know, they're getting an appraisal, from what I understand, Tom, like, that's already in the works.
Yes.
And they want to present a number to the council. I mean, that's, through the eminent domain, domain process, we're get, that's where we're going to end up eventually. So I guess, you know, the council can, you know, authorize the filing of it. If you want me, I can, and I can initiate preparing the paperwork. As far as when I file that, I can take that directive from you, from you folks.
So what I was suggesting at the beginning, I think, was we look at the appraisals and get to the end, as opposed to going through this expensive process.
I, I mean.
Well, if we vote tonight, I mean, we're just starting the process, so we can have that done and out of the way in the event that we do want to move forward.
That's correct.
So I think.
No, no timelines start running until we file the declaration of taking. As Attorney Forre was just saying, I mean, you know, if it, if it's, if the issue is, what's an appropriate figure for it? You know, looking at their appraisal and perhaps getting an appraisal ourselves, you know, would make some, you know, that, that's definitely a legitimate avenue to take because if we end up in the eminent domain process, we're going to be there anyway. You know, as far as the, you know, well, let's repair the roof and all. Obviously, that's for you gentlemen to decide what you want to do there. I, I think it's, makes sense to at least, let's try to get a value of this place.
When you get your appraisal back, would you, would you share that with the city?
We would gladly share it with the city.
Well, yeah, because you've stated that it's your intent that you hope that you could circumvent the private, the eminent domain process, so you'd have to share that figure with us to start negotiations. So, but by the same token, I have to say that I don't want to lose any more time, and I still think that we should ask the, act on the resolution that's before us tonight so that we don't lose any more time. And, you know, should we decide that we want to go another route on this and do a private negotiation, then, you know, so be it. Because you're going to have to do the, you have to do the appraisal anyhow.
Oh.
Yeah, so.
You know, council, like I say, you authorize it at this point. I can, you know, I, I mean, I had started working on this anyway, but I can start the paperwork, get it together, hold on to it. And then, you know, at some point, if count, you know, depending on where this goes, you know, you want, you want me to file, you just let me know. But if you get, the resolution would just authorize it. Nothing starts until you actually file that declaration of taking.
Okay. Yeah, my issue is, I, I was told that that needs a roof on it by winter, or there will be real.
I agree with you 100%.
Real problems in getting that building back.
I would.
So we can agree, if there's not a roof on it by winter, we could lose the whole building.
I agree with that.
That's, that's a possibility of what I was told by a professional that does those things.
I don't argue with that. It definitely needs a new roof.
So, and that's, that's another area that I guess I have a little bit of concern. So if we go through the eminent domain process and proceedings, there's a strong likelihood it wouldn't get done by winter, is that?
As far as the roof?
Yeah.
I mean, the eminent domain process, it doesn't. I mean, the eminent domain process, it doesn't immediately rehabilitate the building.
Well.
It just changes ownership. So from the standpoint of if you go that route and, or private negotiation and the city becomes the owner of the building, it, at that point, it's, you know, fix it or look for someone who can.
But my, okay, so going back to the conversation that I had with Director Brown, we have that authority regardless. Yes?
The property maintenance code gives us the authority to abate a violation and lean the property for the cost of abatement.
Good. One of the things I would potentially caution there, you know, Rebecca's right, you can fix it and lean it. But obviously, that's money that the city is putting out and does not recover until the property is sold.
So if we go through the eminent domain, sorry, go ahead.
So my concern, and I'm not trying to cast aspersions here or anything, but this process has been going on for a long, long time. And if we go that route, okay, we're going to fix these exterior things. At that juncture, does the current owner say, ah, I'm not selling anymore? So now the, the city's out all that money to do these repairs. And who knows when the property gets sold? I just, if you're going down that road, I think it's exchange appraisals, come up with a price. I just think there's too many pitfalls the other way. That's just my opinion. I mean, if we're sitting here talking only, you know, it's been a year or two, that's one thing. This is 10.
Right, but I guess, I don't know, I, I keep going back to the, what, if the major structure. So we've, we've gotten the engineering report and you, you mentioned that their, their engineering report indicated that there's no, I don't remember the exact words, but to some, it says something like there's no fall risk or anything like that. I think that there's a huge, understandably, this week is tough because of the situation in Miami. So it's fresh on everybody's mind, the structural integrity of, and we, it's, it's an odd coincidence that this happens to be coming up right now. But if the goal is to get it done as quickly as possible, right, the roof needs to be done by winter. I don't know that it, going back and forth in court is going to get it done by, you know, are we going to have owner, would we even have ownership by winter?
Well, if you go, if you go the route where you're exchanging appraisals with the intent, like let's come to a number to get this resolved, that's probably quicker than going through the whole eminent domain process. I would say that. What I've heard here tonight, and Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the current owner recognizes that transfer of ownership is probably in the best interest, not the owner themselves, but for the building itself. And I think I heard the phrase, get it in the hands of someone who can do something with this. I, so, you know, I think if that's their intention, and I've known Attorney Ford a long time, respected member of the bar, I have no reason to doubt him, that's their intention, it would make sense to pass the declaration, have the authority, see what you can do as far as negotiating. Because if you can come to a price, an agreeable price, I think you, that's probably more expeditious than if you have a contested eminent domain process. I think that's more expeditious than if you went the conservatorship route. I think that's more expeditious than if you had the city go in there right now. Because theoretically, and Rebecca, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm sure as heck not a contractor because I can't fix anything around my house. But the scale of the project you'd be undertaking to repair that building, you're basically looking at bringing in outside contractors to do it. So outside of the expense, you got a time factor there as well.
Right, the structural issue comes with, it's the roof, right? I mean, as far as, that's what our engineering report came back with, right? That's the biggest structural issue in that building. So we're not, I mean, it's obviously not a small undertaking.
That's, that's not exactly correct though, because the structural is just one facet of it. The hazardous materials is something completely different. It's full of lead paint and asbestos, which all has to be abated before any of that work can start. So, and I, and I've been told by that, by more than one person that's been in there, that's the contractor.
And the water and mold issues.
Exactly. So it's not, yes, it's not in danger, and I wouldn't say there's no risk of it falling. I would say there's limited risk. But yeah, it's not going to fall down tonight by itself, but left and under these conditions, certainly that, that risk goes higher as we move closer to winter.
Right, and I think that was the point, like, that it's not a, you know, there's, we don't speak in certainties, I guess, you know, nobody. And there's a clause on every engineering report that says, but if it does, it's not my fault, right, you know? But if, if the major thing is to get the roof done, to ensure that it doesn't become something worse than it is, then that's, I guess, where I was going with that.
I can say that, I mean, we certainly have qualified local contractors that would be able to perform the work. I don't see any reason why there'd have to be any outside contractors come in. I, I do know, though, the shortage of materials and, you know, what everyone's facing right now. It, it's, it's rough to even get materials in right now. You know, contractors are behind right now. I know that. With a job as, you know, as, as big as something like this, it, it might take some time. But I, I don't think that we would be, I, I don't, I think it would be safe to say that, you know, we have plenty of local contractors that would be able to handle this. It's just a matter of getting it done, and I would say that it would be the entire roof. I don't think, I mean, we had a, we had a permit that was pulled back in 2017 to have the, the roof repaired. And obviously, I, I don't really think that helps the matter, so.
It's, it's beyond that point.
Yeah.
I, I may say that 10 years ago, this roof was a much better roof. You know, it's, it's, it looked good, you know, but the material, whatever it is, apparently doesn't do well with sunlight and basically is kind of eating away whatever structure that is. And at this point, that's why it really can't be successfully patched and everything. It has, it has to have a more modern day surface, and that's complete, so the whole thing is sealed. And that, that's, I'm not a contractor, I'm not an expert, but I don't believe that, well, I do believe that the roof could be done first and get the most important thing done and then tackle everything else. Because at that point, structurally, the building would be safe. And then we would get people to come in, abate whatever asbestos or mold or anything is there. Clean out the building really well and look for a buyer who, I mean, it's a good time to find a buyer there because it looks like hopefully COVID's over. 11th Avenue is becoming a major hub, as you all know, so it's a good time for that. 10 years ago, 11, yeah, go ahead.
I just have a question. What percentage, if you're, if you can, of the LLC, like what percentage of the decision maker are you in this process?
50%.
50?
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to need the agreement of, of the other partner?
Yes. We've been.
She will agree.
We're the best of friends for over 50 years.
Okay, well, that's cool. And, and she was kind enough to return my call and we had a nice cordial conversation, so.
Yeah, and she encouraged me to make this meeting as well as you did, of course.
Yeah, I, I thought it benefited everybody involved, to get, get the dialogue out in the open and.
Right. Yeah, I didn't, I haven't been here before about this issue because I kind of was waiting to see what you would come up with. Because the first headline was, building's going to be torn down, can't be saved. It all changed, you know, and then I waited for the, the study to come through, which it wasn't that long ago. And it said, well, it can be saved, I mean. And at that point, I started trying to get some inroads and I was allowed to go into the building and at least start to clear out some things and get some experts to come in and give us an idea about what we're looking at.
And there, I sort of look at this as two issues. You have the exterior shell, which is one thing. But without the roof being repaired immediately, the interior is a complete other issue. That's what is going to definitely be in trouble.
At this point.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's everything. I, I agree. I have no, you know, argument with that.
Our problem with the roof is, is the materials.
Yeah.
I have a problem at home with four.
Well, the issue there is five years ago, before the material crisis, this should have been done. That, that's the real issue. This stuff could have been, and, and I've been on the Bladed Property Committee since 2010. And so I've gone through this conversation 100 times on a, on a much smaller scale. I believe you mean well, because I've had this conversation with many people. It's a matter of being able to do what needs done, and that's where you have had the issue, even before any illnesses, COVID, whatever, whatever. It's being able to do what needs done, even with your best of intentions.
Just, this is an idea, right? I know you people want action and I appreciate that. Can you postpone your vote for a couple of weeks so that I can get some serious documents about this work being done? So it's not just talk.
So I was actually just going to ask Omar, how quickly could we get an appraisal done?
I would think within a week or so. I, I don't know the availability of someone that could do that, but I'm, I'm not aware that that's in a, in a short supply.
So we have a regularly scheduled voting meeting two weeks from today?
Yes. We can try to get our appraisal done by that time.
Well, so when did you get, I mean.
The roofer? Or the parries? Today. This morning.
Is he local?
Portage.
Portage. Does he understand the severe, he or she understand the severity of the situation?
Equally, he does.
Well, I explained the whole thing to him. Yeah. I was very clear about everything. We, we went by buildings that I thought would be pertinent to the appraisal. But he had already done the work, all right, before he came today. He had, this guy's the go-getter and he, he knows what he's doing.
Did he give you an estimate for how long it would take? I know you said you expect within one to two weeks, but did he say he would have it done in two weeks?
Well, can, I would have to talk to him tomorrow to confirm now that he's been through the building, okay? Because that's, he doesn't have to go back in the building. He took all his measurements. He went through the building everywhere, you know, he looked at everything. So I don't want to say something that's not true here. But now that he's been through the building and he's done his comparables, then when I talk to him tomorrow, he'll be able to give a better idea of that. And that way, hopefully, we can avoid a lot of like legal confrontations, all that type of thing.
See, I don't know how relevant that is, because even if we voted to go ahead to start, all we would be voting for tonight would be for, for our, our council to just start paperwork. We really wouldn't be doing anything.
Well, that's your business. I'm just, I was just throwing out a suggestion to try to make things as simple as possible and honest as possible.
I agree with you. Even Mr. Flynn does start the paperwork, until he files the declaration of taking, I don't have to file anything.
Right, so, so you, okay, so what you, so what you just indicated was that you agreed with, with Attorney Finn, yes?
Yeah, what, what he indicated is the process and it's going to take, once he gets the paperwork ready, you, you guys, I think, maybe they have to vote again on the declaration of taking. Is this sufficient?
The, the resolution, in my opinion, would be sufficient.
Okay, yeah, that would be a question, what can you raise, maybe, with it?
I would agree to that. So, just me personally, as one vote, I would agree to that if we went ahead with this resolution and then agreed that we would have to take a separate vote in two weeks or however. Just if that's what you need for peace of mind, I'm willing to make that deal.
We don't save any, we don't, we don't save any time by doing that.
Yeah, but.
I mean, it just.
Well, but we're not saving any time anyway, are we?
And two things I just want to go back to. One, this building is not on the national registry. There are, there are only, there is, in 1992, there was designated a downtown historic district for Altoona, which is basically between 11th to 15th Avenue and 11th to 14th Street. And there were four individual properties in Altoona in the core downtown that were in the national registry. It was the Dudley House, the Pan Alto, the Central Trust Building and the Michler. The Dudley House was withdrawn in 2001 from the national registry and it was torn down. So this building resides in that historic district, but it is not on the national registry. The other thing I want to go back to is the, the comment about water being a problem in basements and other properties in downtown. And I'd, I'd ask the staff to address that because my understanding was they were in the property next door and there was no water in the basement. Is that correct?
That's correct, Councilman. The, but they do have water issues because they all have sump pumps.
Okay.
So if there is a water issue, they just don't have water in their basement.
Okay, thank you. Let's clarify that then.
In response to, you were saying, Councilman Butterbaugh, I mean, if you gentlemen wanted to defer the vote till two weeks, that's fine. I can still work on the paperwork regardless, so.
Can I make a comment here? In terms of the historic register and everything, that area is designated it. Therefore, that building is in that, and that building is, can get tax credits, can get capital improvement, 50-50 matching fund by the state. These are all facts. There's, there's a, there's a reason why people are developing in these areas. It's because they can, when they're done, they can recoup three quarters of their investment. Otherwise, they wouldn't, they wouldn't get involved. They would just tear down and build new. So even though the building itself is, it's in that avenue, that is.
It's not on the registry, it's in the district. And I think there's other things that have to be done in order for it to qualify for getting historic tax credits, because there's some other properties that that have been done to, but there's a process and that's never been initiated on the McQuarrie's building, so.
Right, I just know that I've talked to the people who run the departments or the governor and I've gotten the okay that yes, these are available.
That's probably factual, but there is a process that has, is involved in applying to get those historic tax credits.
And I'm sure that there's covenants stating that so much of the original structure, et cetera, has to be maintained.
Right, because we've seen that with the two buildings that I'm familiar with in the core downtown that have, that have utilized that, so.
Well, the, the McQuarrie building is the initial, the real facade. It's never been altered, all right? So therefore, if that, it had been covered with aluminum or whatever it be, then that wouldn't be, those credits wouldn't be.
I don't think we're here to debate the facade and the historic value of the building.
I was just, I was just responding.
I know, I know. I think we're getting a little off track, though. Does anybody else have anything further for Mr. Helfrich?
All I can say is that I agree, I, I would, I don't know if this is Councilman Butterbaugh's intent. I would agree with them to, to grant the two weeks because we have a regularly scheduled voting meeting. And I guess here's where I'm at, that eminent domain is something that nobody on this, in this body is, that's not something that anybody up here favors as a general, I don't think, policy procedure or. But I, where I'm at is after hearing from some of the people, our, our own staff, that it's not necessarily a structural issue today, but if we get to the, this winter and it's not a, could I just finish? And then, and I don't think you disagree with that either. I don't. But I think that. I fully agree. Everyone up here thinks that eminent domain, and if anybody disagrees, I apologize, and, but thinks that eminent domain is something that should only be undertaken in the most extraordinary circumstances and only, and I think public safety is one of those extraordinary circumstances. And even though today, it may not be a, a fall risk, if we get through this winter and we have a winter like we did two years ago, now last year we had almost nothing, but, or, I'm sorry, I think I have those flipped. But, yeah, two winters ago, doesn't matter, then it, it could be a serious risk. So, I mean, I would grant you the two weeks. If I'm just one member of council, I would grant the two weeks. But after that, I, I do think that it, it sounds like it's important.
Right, I understand.
I just have one very quick question, just if you can verify for me, please. Why the two appraisals? If, if the intent of the appraisal is applying the value currently as is, and, and then the intention is that the proposed force patch will be applied in developer that would then, you know, be able to offer you that. that would then, you know, be able to offer you that that price and then and then fix it, fix it up. Why get the, why get the, why pay the money for the second appraisal for the roofs that have already been done? Is your intent then to to go ahead and and fork out the money to do the roof at that time? When you didn't do that for the past 10 years, I'm just kind of confused as to why you would pay the money for an appraisal and fix up the value, unless your intent is to keep it and fix it up?
The the answer to that is that the roof needs to be done, all right? And a sale could be in a month or two after the repairs, or it might not be. And if the roof is done, we can proceed with cleaning out the building and everything, getting all the moisture out, et cetera. There's more chance of selling the building at a reasonable price, attracting more people, and satisfying the city if they are concerned that the roof's going to cave in or something, then it becomes a nightmare for all concerned. That's why. It's not that I'd love to spend the money for a roof. I don't think there's, other than just giving it up, the building, which I'm not going to do.
Would 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 either would either you or your solicitor define what a reasonable price is?
Well, I don't think we can publicly state that now, because we haven't seen the appraisal.
Again, that's why we got the appraisal, to answer his question, actually, is to know what we're dealing.
Do you know what a reasonable price is? We've seen that in the offers that have been made.
Yeah, so that's why.
Another thing about the deferment is if we have to get an appraisal anyway, I mean, could we ask that that be done as as soon as possible?
I know I would like to, I'd be curious about seeing their appraisal initially. I'm sure our appraiser would as well. Theirs is already in the works. If it's already, theirs is already in the works, they're already, you know, a little bit further down the road. We can take steps to get an appraiser lined up, but I think it would be beneficial if we had that as well.
So we, I'd know, like, we don't have to do an appraisal as the city, excuse my ignorance of the process?
No, I mean, basically, it's determining what is fair market value of the property. You know, and that's normally done through the appraisal process. You know, if you get their appraisal, and depending upon what's in there, if it's determined, yeah, that that's a reasonable number, we don't think our own would come significantly different, you can go with that. Or if you don't like, you know, that, it it's just a tool that you use for trying to come to that conclusion.
Just for the sake of discussion, has anybody checked to see what the assessed value is at the courthouse?
You know what, Councilman, I did pull the card today, and I don't, am I a little?
Just remind everybody, we're still in the public comment section of the meeting.
I'm aware.
Well, it's it's worth it. It's important to do the right thing on this, for all involved. Unless you want to take a little hiatus and let the ABI.
No, I I just, you know, we're, this is still public comment, we still have the solicitor's agenda item later later down, and we haven't asked if there was any other public comment, that's all. I'm not saying, suggesting that we give this short trip in any way, shape, or form, so.
Or or. Discuss the ABI, get that over with, and then come back to this.
They have already waited an hour.
Yeah, that's true.
153,200.
I'm sorry, could, now that it's static, could you say that again, please?
153,200.
Okay, thank you.
That's that's what's on the assessment card from the courthouse.
Okay.
Okay. I'm I'm in favor of waiting until their appraisal comes back, but I also think that we should move forward with the vote tonight.
Concur.
And get that ball rolling, just so we have that in our back pocket if we need it.
I agree.
I don't think we disagree.
Very good, very good. Hey, thanks a lot for coming, though. I thought I thought that was worth having the the talk, and so.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our first discussion item of the evening is Allegheny's Broadband, Inc., and joining us is Jim Foreman and Steve McKnight.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmen, for having us here this evening. As Mayor Pacifico indicated, my name is Jim Foreman. I'm here this evening in the capacity for Allegheny Broadband, Inc. I'm the Blair County Representative. Allegheny Broadband, Inc. is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and non-governmental agency. So the purpose, who we are and what we do, is basically operating under the sort of geographic framework of Southern Allegheny's Planning Development, six counties. In 2018, started studying internet accessibility and and lack thereof. And so obviously, when you're in more densely populated areas, easier terrain, it's a lot more commercially attractive for providers to get services into cities, into densely populated suburbs. It's more challenging when you get into rural areas. So surveys were done here in Blair County and other surrounding counties, and maps were generated, established was their need. And and we have those survey results, we can share them with you, but the needs are overwhelming in terms of unserved, underserved, and intermittent service. So if you've ever been on Zoom, sort of had the spinning thing, or, you know, you got some latency, or you thought you had the best speed till you go to use it at different points in time of the day, that could be a function of the the media, the way it's being delivered, or it could just be a lot of cars on the highway. So think about it like that. So the Allegheny Broadband Board was formed a little over a year ago, going on two years ago. Steve McKnight also sits on that board, serving all six counties, obviously with his expertise in economic development. We're here this evening to talk to you about the your ARP funds and the potential eligibility and how you might use some of that money for broadband if you think that it's necessary. We're out doing, and Brandon Carson's our executive director, and he's away on vacation. So we've got a tuned up sort of dog and pony show we've been doing. We've met with the county commissioners and starting to make our way and obviously speaking with you in townships and school districts and hospital to try to figure out if it makes sense to you, as it may to them, to work collaboratively in taking the needs that we've established and implementing them so that we can have competitive and consistent and reliable broadband service throughout the county. Working with our solicitor, or share it throughout six counties, and that's not what we're here to say. Any monies that you would consider using from the city or allocating to be used from the city would be used in the city in addition to in collaboration with the county's monies, school district monies, that is Altoona, you know, and that the projects would be managed through ABI. And so we don't want to take you through an hour of five-minute public debate here, but we wanted to get it out and sort of just lay out the structure and hopefully open up some 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 Q and A with you. Our request, very specifically to you, would be a 15% allocation. Doesn't mean you have to spend it, but a consideration of a 15% allocation of your ARP monies. They have to be used within two years. And as projects are identified, as if and when they're identified in the city of Altoona, and they're presented working, excuse me, cooperatively with the county, that that would be the trigger to then fund those projects, if that makes sense. So you wouldn't necessarily have to spend the money. But if the need was there and it met the the bill, and Attorney Finn, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to read the Treasury's guidance and added guidance on it.
At this particular, not in detail, no.
Yeah. Broadband seems to be one of the things that sort of has a pretty clear path. It's it's been stated and restated and overstated. Other ones are getting trickier and trickier, like everything else with PPP. Sounds good at the outset, and then the details come. But so with that, and Steve, do you have any comments you wanted to, I just, Q and A is important. And obviously, it makes sense, whether it's children at home or you carrying on your meetings as you had to do remote by Zoom or hospital visits and telemedicine and school from home and remote work and and recruiting businesses here for the future, that if they're going to set up here, that they have infrastructure that's competitive with other areas. So with that, questions, comments, concerns?
So you guys have the survey already or in the process?
We have, well, we have, we both have surveys, and then we're doing mapping, so we can share with you mapping. Actually, Brandon has, it's getting more and more populated with detail.
Nice.
So we have mapping for the city, the county, the school districts, all six counties. The only thing I'd mention to you, Dave, is though, when you say, and I didn't know this till we really got into the weeds as board members, that but if, when they look at a region, and let's just, for argument's sake, let's call it like eight blocks, you know, just some region, and they say, well, what's available there? They'll take what is best available at optimum speed, and then that gets colored in as saying this is available there. But we all know pockets, depending on where you live, where it's like, oh, man, I go up over the hill and I, you know, drop my calls or whatever, if you live down. And it's just the nature of where we live. And so that's why ABI was formed to begin with. If it was easy to do and we had sort of uniform and homogeneous sort of consistent service, we wouldn't even exist.
Oh, you guys have a tough job. This this is a tough area of the country, just because of the terrain alone.
Yeah, and and to that end, when people say, well, what does it look like? It looks like fiber, it looks like towers, it looks like every sort of technology that's available, depending on what the geographic constraints, and also, to be honest with you, what the service area looks like. So if you're going to develop an area for homes or whatever, you know, Atlantic Broadband or whomever, it wouldn't have to be them, but, you know, providers, you know, they're not going to run half a mile down there unless they have sufficient customers there, and it makes sense to them on, you know, their business, their for-profit, so.
Thank you.
Welcome. Other questions? You want to hear from Steve? He's got a better voice than me.
I think it sounds worthwhile, and I think it sounds like something that's been debated for years and with no real resolution. I mean, people people talk about.
And I think.
Accessibility and just as a solution.
Mayor and Omar have these. These are, working with our solicitor, these, there's grant cooperation. So should you consider doing this? It's sort of the mechanics of like, well, how's this all going to play out? So we've crafted, our solicitors crafted templates, and we've spent some time in our board meetings talking about how to get everyone comfortable with their entity, their agency, and that it's your money, it's protected and being used, right? But also working with the county. So those have been transmitted. The, and we can get into it, but I think that George was even planning to have a collective meeting of solicitors at some point for all of the potential agencies or, you know, governmental units so that it could, so everyone can sort of compare notes or whatever. So I don't know the date of that, or, you know, I don't know if they've even picked a date, but I thought it would be, you know, we thought we'd throw that out, but.
Yeah, if you could forward that date along.
Yeah, for sure. And again, our our request is the allocation. We can't ask you to spend something. We haven't presented you with a project yet, so, for sure.
I think this is something we should definitely consider as a body. I think this is able to be, I think this is a portion of part of infrastructure that I think initially we were hoping for would be in this piece of legislation, but it's definitely a different form of infrastructure that I think communities to develop. And we talk about having people, especially in the the post-COVID world, where really you can work for anyone, anywhere, as long as you have reliable and reliable connection and adequate speed, et cetera. So, yeah, I'm I'm in favor of us exploring this further. I would like to see that report, by the way, that you mentioned, or that that details some of those specific areas, if possible. And the the map, if you could provide the map that you're talking about, too, that would be great.
Yes, yep.
We like pictures.
It's a colored map, too, so lots of different colors. One or the other, and it didn't come up as a question, but it may for you at some point, and that would be, we're, we aren't intending to be the end you, the end provider, but if one of the providers would choose not to, ABI is in a position to be a provider, A. B, we are now, been granted the ability to for, to take things by eminent domain, so we're a utility. So that'll be helpful, that if we ran into, you know, we need a tower and there's some hurdles or someone being obstinate, we, it's obviously not the path after listening to the last hour that you want to go, but it's but it's there if need be, so. Omar?
So just just to clarify, I think you said earlier, you're looking for 15% of the city's allocation for this purpose?
Correct. Correct. We we, across the county, we think it's around a $12 million project, we think. When you get into the specific ass and you get the bids back, and depending on where you got to put a tower, where you lay fiber, I mean, we're, until we go out, and we're out now with RFPs in a couple of areas, not in Blair County. There's one in Bedford and one in Somerset and Huntington, smaller in scope. But, you know, when we get those in, so we're working off of rules of thumb, what's it cost to lay fiber per mile? So we're, you know, we just really have scope that way. But that's what I said about the allocation. We would come back with specific projects with RFPs and and hard numbers. And by the way, ABI is intended to be, with the staffing that's there, it will be self-sufficient. So we're not going to be coming back to you post ARP funds and say, hey, to keep this thing running, can you throw money into the kitty? And the way we'll be doing that is through the lease of infrastructure so that the commercial providers that are out there can erect their own tower and do that. But if they choose not to, and we erect a tower, then we're the one leasing the space to them or a competitor or doing it ourselves. So we have a, we have a pro forma put together on self-sufficiency. Okay. Easier to talk about building up than tearing down, I can tell you. Thank you.
All right, moving on, is there anything else that we have to talk about with McCrory's?
I hope not.
Should we, are we going to go into the resolution now? Do we want to do that now?
Okay, the resolution. I'm going to need a motion in a second.
I'll second. Well, why don't we do this as a governing body? How's that sound?
Yes, for all the wrong reasons.
Okay. Authorizing the city solicitor to undertake documentation and filings to proceed to prepare documentation and filings for purposes of an eminent domain proceeding regarding the property located at 1306 to 10 11th Avenue, Altoona, PA, tax map number 01 dot 03 dash 10 dash 058 dot 00, with no formal filing to be made prior to July 13, 2021. And the move for adoption was by council, the governing body, and second by the governing body. And I'll call for the roll for a vote. Vice Mayor Butterbaugh.
Yes.
Councilman Cachati.
Yes.
Councilman Harper.
Yes.
Councilman Ickes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jordan is absent. Councilman Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico.
Yes.
And the vote passes six to zero.
Okay, we'll move on now to letter C, the food truck ordinance. Rebecca, is that, are you going to?
Yeah.
Take the lead on that one?
The ordinance is in response to the increase in business licenses, the applications we've received for food trucks in the city since the start of the pandemic. You've probably seen quite a few around. The City of Altoona Zoning Hearing Board recommended that some kind of ordinance or regulations be discussed following a, an appeal they received last month for a food truck, and actually one they're receiving next month for the July hearing. an appeal they received last month for a food truck and actually one they're receiving next month for the July hearing. Operators of food trucks currently obtain a city business license only and they're licensed based on their, for their home-based location or where they park their vehicles. So they're subject to the zoning regulations only for a business or a home-based business, but many of the food truck operators are based outside of the city and bring their trucks in to operate. Nothing in our current zoning ordinance is specific to food trucks, such as where they'll, where they're able to park, their hours of operation, if they need to be within so many feet of an established restaurant or other eating facility. So that's really what this ordinance tries to capture. It seems like if you, if you're reading the news or on, you know, at local news or anything at all with even the state college area, Johnstown area, it looks like municipalities are almost scrambling to try to regulate them a bit or at least discuss establishing some regulations because they're becoming so prevalent. And it's not that they're, they're becoming a problem, it's just that there are so many. In fact, there are so many that the 2018 International Fire Code, which won't be adopted actually probably for another year or so, all the 2018 codes are behind schedule with the Commonwealth. But they have an entire section dedicated to fire safety for food trucks. And that's something that obviously we'll adopt when we adopt the 2015 version of the Fire Code, but it does seem like they're just, it, it's a hot topic right now because they are so prevalent and are certainly not because, like I said, there's a, a problem. It's just more regulatory, yeah.
Would, would we sort of be fixing what isn't broke at this point?
Well, I guess, you know, it might, I, I guess in a way you could say that. I mean, I, I don't know. We have had, the zoning hearing board suggested that the city has something in place. Right now, if we have any kind of issue that we run into, we can only fall back on the licensing for home-based businesses. If something is out of, is operating outside of a home-based business regulation, then we can take action as a zoning hearing board on that. But if somebody is parked right in front of, say, a school or, you know, right in, too close to a stop sign, which I guess could be the police department, but if they're parked in front of a school and they've been there for four days and they just won't move, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know where we'd want to go with that or what, what kind of regulation we would have to enforce. Okay, well, you know, it's nine to, 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM only, you have to move your truck at night, it can't stay overnight. I, I just don't know. So it's really something to be ahead of, of an issue. And like I said, it wasn't the suggestion of the zoning hearing board from last month's meeting.
I, I agree. I mean, I think it's something to get out ahead of. It's just a popular trend.
Sure.
You know, and, I mean, speaking, speaking for myself, I absolutely love food trucks. I was joking with the guys earlier that I could, I can eat healthy all week long and ruin it in one go around at a food truck. But, but, no, what, what I really wanted to say was, as far as the regulations that go from a home-based business to something that's mobile like this, don't we have sort of something similar in place with people who are contracted out to do their own trucking companies? For example, like vendors, you know, those box trucks that, that are parked on the side of the road and get calls and complaints because they're parking in a restaurant.
The only thing we have, right, I mean, I guess it would, it would be similar except that the box truck isn't serving anything out of their, their truck. You know, they're not, they're not having customers coming to and from that box truck or, and they're not, you know, preparing food or there might not be food waste. You know, there's a lot that goes into that. I know that a lot of, you know, though the, the Department of Agriculture, they, they have, they obviously have to license these food trucks and they have pretty strict regulations about the food waste and hygiene and things like that. But that's outside of what we would do. They don't obviously, they don't regulate any kind of hours or where they are, parking, how long they're there. But the home-based business and, and there's, there's two types. There's a, there's a no-impact home-based business and then there's a major impact. A no-impact home-based business would be, basically what that is, is it's somebody who doesn't have any signage and no customers coming to and from the property, no deliveries, no supplies for the business onsite. That's pretty much no impact. So that could be a contractor using his office as his home, but taking his work vehicle out to the job site. A major impact home-based business, they need zoning hearing board approval. And what that is, is, you know, obviously if you're, let's say you're a consult, a consultant of some sort, you have people coming and going. You might want to hang a small, even a window sign. Maybe we would generate more traffic in the neighborhood. Those need zoning hearing board approval. So right now, that's how we regulate the, these, these food trucks. But like I said, I want to say 90 to 95% of our food trucks now are out of the city. So they still get a city business license, but they're located outside of the city and they come in here for events. You don't really see too many food trucks on city streets, just kind of going around from street to street or block to block. They're generally confined to maybe a special event, weekly or monthly, maybe downtown, and, and they are loved by everybody. I just, I, I, we had a, a request at the zoning hearing board last month. For example, the, the, the operator, the would-be operator wanted to operate his food truck in a private property until like 2:00 AM. And, you know, the zoning board was, they were able to, they actually did deny his, his request, but they had to use certain sections of that business license section of the zoning. So we don't have anything to regulate.
Is that the same with, sorry about all these questions?
Sure.
Is that the same with like these traveling like ice cream trucks, snow cones and stuff that go through the neighborhoods and same type of licensure?
Well, it actually, I don't think it is because I know that from what I have read and the research I've done, the ice cream trucks and the snow cone trucks, while they're still licensed as a business, they're not required to have any kind of, it, it looks like in all of the food truck ordinances that are drafted, they exclude ice cream trucks and snow cone trucks.
I was going to say, we're not messing with ice cream or snow cone.
So how many, how many do we have at this point in time, licenses in the city?
I want to say business licenses for food trucks. We have probably a dozen, maybe more.
The only thing that I have a question on is, what is it, 100.5? Sounds like, sounds like I'm a DJ for a radio station. Letter H, no food truck is permitted within 500 feet of a building licensed as a restaurant facility or facility. Is that, I'm just asking, is that kind of like a standard that we've seen pulled from other, some other policies? I mean, I, essentially, no food truck could operate in downtown Altoona.
Yeah, I have an issue with that one, too.
Yeah, well.
Heritage Plaza is where, where, is where the majority of our food trucks congregate and that would basically exclude Heritage Plaza from hosting food trucks.
I, I, if I can say, I, I know in looking at ordinances of other municipalities, it's, that, that restriction varies as far as, I know they've, you know, I've seen a lot of them have some type of distance from a restaurant, but the exact length of the, the restriction varies and it probably is depending upon the, the topography and makeup of where these food trucks are in relation to other restaurants.
I mean, I appreciate that. I mean, I personally support that not even being in there, but I would, I would agree.
And this was pulled from several different ordinances from other municipalities and it's, hence the, the red there basically was whatever you determine.
I appreciate that because pretty much everywhere there's red, I, I would like to delete, like, my daughter had a food truck for her wedding. So, and it worked out really well and that's what she wanted. But this is, my, my concern is the law of unintended consequences of us passing something and then all of a sudden, uh-oh, food truck buddy is calling up and saying, whoop, the city's not letting me do this, this and this and this like we always did. Or in another case where somebody wants a food truck at their wedding, the church can't have it there for some reason or because, because we have, we have, once again, the law of unintended consequences comes up. I would like to take further look at this rather than vote on it anytime.
Yeah, you, you, you'd have a problem too, I would think, if, um, some of us can remember actually when the Arts Festival, now defunct, or at least on hiatus, was in downtown Altoona.
Yes.
And we've had other festivals and you'd have problems, you could have problems with church festivals where they bring in.
Yep.
The hot sausage sandwich or the funnel cake stand or something, and I think that would, could possibly run afoul of the ordinance, too.
Yeah, and we don't want to do anything that would mess up St. Rose or what they're doing currently either.
And the other thing would be that if, you know, say your food truck pulled up and it was after hours or before they, the restaurant opened and they were serving, you know, they're not competing then with that establishment. And, and again, I think it's, you know, all about unintended consequences, Dave, so.
What, I can't even, it used to be Dominix. What's outside of Lowe's?
Yeah, Dominix.
Okay, is it still Dominix? But my, okay, nonetheless, right? So that, I mean, that, if, if it's not allowed on private property, even with the agreement of a business, I mean, I, I, I would take issue with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the, the main points of this, and, and like I said, most of them are in red because it was something that you, you know, most of the text is in red, so it was something that you would need to determine. But, you know, the tanks, generators and things that, you know, that, that basically motorize this thing or make it operationable, they can't, operational, they can't be placed within a public right-of-way. A person in charge must be present at the food truck vending at all times. I mean, there's certain things, no vending is permitted within 25 feet of a higher, a fire hydrant. I mean, it's, it's things like that that, you know, if somebody says, well, show me where I can't be right up against this fire hydrant, we can show them. Or, you know, why can't I have my propane tank out in the sidewalk? Well, we can show them, you know, that, those are the kind of things that.
No, I appreciate that and I think there's a lot of common sense stuff in here that does make sense, like the fire hydrant, like the, somebody must be present in the food truck. I mean, there's equipment in there, right? You wouldn't want somebody just to be able to sneak in or whatever. I think there's a lot of common sense stuff. But in general, I would pretty much, if it were up to me alone, I would eliminate C, H and I. Yeah. I, I just don't know how, like, C, I mean, we don't.
I mean, are we able to maybe take, you know, provide our personal feedback to Rebecca after so long?
Yeah, let's do that.
Before the next meeting and.
But I agree with you on the C.
I think this is a great place to start.
Yeah, like I said, there's a lot of good stuff, a lot of common sense stuff, but I think some of it starts to, you're, you're getting into, you know, restricting somebody's.
Because you have someone with a food truck, you know, that's.
It's a person, it's a business.
Yeah, it's, it's in their backyard and their neighbors have a lot of foot traffic and there's food being dropped all over the place, there's mice and, I mean, it can, I can understand how that can easily cause problems.
Well, you don't get between people and their ice cream and you don't get between people and their food. You've got to be careful here.
David brain freezers, I don't.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so we will be open for comment on this, you know, in the next couple of weeks or month. I mean, there's no hurry, there's just some issues that I think Rebecca and I have seen happening in, in neighborhoods that really don't coincide with what we would think of as a typical food truck.
Well, yeah, you're talking about something getting established almost as a permanent restaurant, which I think is why the comment about letter I, no vending permitted on private property, is at what point does it cease to be a food truck and does it start to become a permanent restaurant?
You don't really have to define that in here, right? Because that would fall under, like, the, the.
Zoning.
Zoning.
Correct.
Ordinance would catch that violation.
Correct.
So that doesn't really need to be defined, I wouldn't think, so, okay.
As far as B, just a quick question, would, would the zoning board also be, I mean, so I could understand not wanting to have a food truck operating in a completely residential zone and at certain hours because, you know, I, I mean, I can understand why neighbors would be upset about that, but is that something that is already, would already be restricted? Like, operating in a residential zone and between the hours of, I don't know, 11 and?
Only with zoning hearing board approval. There, the zoning hearing board determines those kind of guidelines only with an appeal. So if somebody, you know, that would be considered a major impact home-based business, if they would allow it, they would establish hours of operation.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else? Okay. Moving on to demolition specifications, is that you again, Rebecca?
This is, and this is, this is an easier one. This is just a little more housekeeping, really. We've previously inspected demolition activity based on regulations and language, based on, oh, I'm sorry, in specific demo contracts that are awarded by the state and with federal funding. There's nothing in the Uniform Construction Code that references demo specs and procedures. It's up to municipalities to create regulations on demolitions. This ordinance that was prepared references total and partial demolition and it provides language for pedestrian safety, protection for adjacent buildings, and it includes its damages and references traffic control and debris control in the right-of-way, dust control, which is always a problem, and asbestos removal. Also included are the procedures for backfilling, grading and seeding the sites. Most all demolition contractors that have conducted anything in the city are aware of what we require. But without legal adoption of something, we have nothing to enforce. If, you know, maybe the homeowner requests the demolition contractor to do something else and say, I don't want the site, you know, seeded, I want it, I just, I don't want shale on the site. Or, you know, if the homeowner doesn't want to, you know, if they're doing their own demolition, if they don't want to provide dust control or any kind of protective measures for pedestrians. So this pretty much outlines, I mean, it's pretty brief, but it, it, it outlines traffic control, pedestrian safety, dust and debris, asbestos, and this was pretty much taken from the state regulations and that's what we have followed all along.
Yeah, this one seems pretty good and sensible.
This one's clean.
Yeah. So when would we be voting on this?
We can put it in final form if you wanted to introduce it. It's your July 12 meeting.
I'm good with that.
All right, moving on to American Rescue Plan.
Mayor and council, we talked before about setting up what were like public listening sessions, for lack of a better term. And if you have a better term, I'd be willing to adopt it. Related to the, the ARPA monies. And we have established two dates. One is Tuesday, July the 20th and the second one is Tuesday, August 17th. The second one has been scheduled for the Devora Center downtown and the first one, we are still trying to confirm that with the Altoona area school district to use one of their facilities.
So the second one will be Monday, August 16th at 6:00 PM at the Devora Center.
Oh, okay, yes, yes, you're right.
Okay, I want to make sure we get that. Tuesday, July 20th, 6:00 PM, and we're working with the school district.
Yeah, and Monday, the 16th at, at the Devora Center, about, Monday, the 16th of August. That's really all I had to, to say about the American Rescue Plan.
Okay. Does anybody have anything on, else on that? Okay, moving on to the. Okay, moving on to the manager update.
Uh, just a few things to update you on, um, you know, flooding, as you know, the flooding that we experienced a couple of weeks ago is still in the news, and, uh, we're still doing some responses to complaints and investigations and those, those things between properties and vehicles are in the dozens of, of complaints. Just wanted to let you know that and update you on that. The city's, uh, has three pension actuarials, so with three pension plans, each has a separate actua- actuary. Uh, right now, they are going to be doing their, uh, biannual, um, actuarial valuation report, and in order to do that report, they are floating some potential changes in actuarial assumptions. So one of the things, uh, that we've kicked around for a while is to use a phased-in lowering of the assumed rate of return for all the pensions, which is at seven and a quarter percent. Um, I'm just want to make sure everybody's on board with moving in that direction in a phased-in manner, perhaps towards the seven percent mark, which is, it doesn't, may not sound like a big move, but it could affect. Any, any, anything like this could affect what we actually are required to, uh, contribute to our pensions, so.
So this will impact the MMO?
Yes.
Yeah, so any, any reduction in the assumed rate of return is going to make that MMO just a little bit higher.
So it's gonna get us closer to funding our pension.
Subs- yeah, subsequently, it will make the, it, most likely will make the liability larger on the, the balance sheet or stay in a net position for, for municipalities. But the conversation we've had in the past is that seven and a quarter percent on these investment returns is probably, uh, going forward is probably, uh, a pretty aggressive rate of return to achieve, given the allocation we have for our investment portfolios. Have, have the actuaries communicated with you, uh, Mr. Manager, as far as what they've defined as a phased-in approach? Is it going to be done over five years, ten years? Just curious.
The, the ones that I've seen so far actually talk about a much bigger change, uh, like a couple of percent, um, reduction, which I think we are not in a position to take that type of a hit as far as.
I mean, a one per.
The additional costs that we're gonna have to.
If we reduce the discount rate one percent, it's probably going to double our unfunded liability on paper. That would take us from like five and a half million to eleven million annually.
Well, that's, see, that's the issue. We don't necessarily have the ability to, the tax collection capacity.
Yeah.
At this point, to, to make that, that, that type of change. So I'm only, I'm only talking about a quarter of a percent, at least for this time, um.
So is this something that was initiated by the actuaries themselves?
Yeah, so what, what they'll do is each one of them, um, will send out, hey, you know, these, these are our recommendations. And they're, and the other thing is they're not necessarily the same recommendations, but they're all, generally speaking, a, a move in a, in, in, in a direction that's gonna cost the city, it's gonna require the city to put more money into their, into their pensions. Uh, our MMOs are gonna go up. Um, I'm just talking about a phased-in approach that's gonna be at least somewhat minimal at the beginning.
So we're going from seven and a half, seven and a half to ideally like five and a half or something like that? Seven and a quarter, but it's not going to be a jump. We're not gonna go overnight from seven and a quarter to five and a half or six percent. It would be over a period of time.
Yeah.
Be- because of us being classified as a, I believe we still qualify for, um, at the Act, is it Act two oh five funds? Or state aid that we qualify for? Which is a substantial portion of, of the MMO that, that we're able to utilize to offset the MMO on that, so.
Yes, you're correct, um.
I just find it interesting that it's all of a sudden a discussion with the actuaries.
Nah, we've been talking about this, well, it's been a couple, but when was it, like, three or four years ago this came up?
Private pension plans have been doing this for the last ten, fifteen years.
Oh, yeah.
Well, every, every time they go through this process, they'll have recommendations. The, the issue is, uh, we haven't jumped on that, and there hasn't been any real change except for the, uh, mortality tables, I think was the last, two years ago, we, we changed that. But I, I think it's prudent, um, you know, the actuarial assumptions, uh, are, are different across the various actuaries. And I don't want to get too far in the weeds in this, but I think it, it, everyone we talked to when we went through the pension RFP process, they, they were using seven percent as, well, we think we can get there in the, in the next ten years. That's a, that's a good assumed rate of return, so I, I think it's just prudent to take a small step in the right direction. That's, that's really all I'm saying here.
And I think to my peers on council, I, I would be supportive of that.
Okay, um, moving on, and if we have any other discussion about it, I'm glad to talk about it.
I will say quickly, I, Mr. Manager, compliments to you, I received, um, two very good compliments to you from people in the business community, uh, today. So I appreciate your willingness to, to work with them in the city.
Goes with, with the job, is, in my, uh, view. Um, so we talked about one building downtown, uh, I just wanted to update you folks on another building that is a, a city-owned property that's the former, former site of the J and J Recycling Building. I don't know if anybody's been by that, uh, site lately, but I've been watching it.
Yeah, they've been working on it.
And it's, uh, looking better than it has probably in decades, so, and we're moving in the right direction. At the July twelfth meeting, though, on your agenda, there'll be four blighted properties, uh, that have already been designated as blighted. Um, they're gonna be added for demolition. Uh, the city's basically gonna have to foot the bill for that immediately, and then, um, those, the, uh, Community Development Block grants, uh, will then reimburse the city. I just want to let you know that.
Oh, that's.
I have those, uh, addresses here if you'd like them. If not, you can just look forward to seeing them at, uh, the July twelfth.
Wait, can you rattle those off if you don't mind?
Sure, that's, uh, nineteen oh two North, yeah, excuse me, start over again. Nineteen oh two Tenth Street, thirteen eighteen North Fourth Avenue, eighteen oh eight Eleventh Street, and eighteen hundred Sixth Avenue.
Thank you.
And then the last thing I have is just to let you all know that the recruitment process for the Community Development Director position is now underway. That's all I have.
Thank you, Omar.
Thank you.
All right, uh, council discussion, Councilman Kelly?
No, I just, real quick, Mayor, um, my.
My mic, thank you. Real quick, uh, last meeting I had brought up, uh, concerns relative to the, um, juvenile crime we've seen using, um, firearms, and I was talking earlier with Chief Merrill, and Chief, I understand that you're gonna be on the agenda at our next meeting, is that right, with?
Yes, I'm slated July, uh, twelfth to do the twenty twenty annual report. Um, obviously, we're six months into this year, so I, I was intending on trying to make it obviously relevant to what's happening now, and if, um, I, I started working on it already, but if anyone has something specific they want specifically covered or talked about, you know, reach out to me and I'll gladly add it. But, um, you know, subjectively, you're right, there is, um, an increase, um, specifically with juveniles. Um, you know, and, and a lot of that stems from drugs, um, illegal firearms. The more drugs and illegal firearms, the more crime there will be, and that will also filter down to the juveniles. And I, I would also add that I think there's also an element to, um, you know, nationally, you'll see trends similar to that, although I, I do think we're unique. Everything that happens nationwide doesn't necessarily happen in Altoona.
Right.
And I'll, I'll cover some of that too, but, um, you know, subjectively, I, I believe you're right. And a- again, if anyone wants something specifically covered, reach out to me and I'll, I'll gladly attempt to collect the data or at least cover it.
Thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Councilman Carper?
I have nothing additional at this time, Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Butterball?
I just wanted to make a quick comment, uh, the Silk Mill over by the Grand Palazzo, uh, they did a really good job on that, and that looks real nice, and I, from what I last heard, they're looking for tenants for that, and so that, that'll be a nice place for office or, um, whatever type they're looking for there, but if you didn't get a chance to go by there lately, it's looking, looking good and sharp.
Um, we are still looking for photos for the city website, the new soon-to-be redesigned city website. Um, so if there are photographers in the city who have beautiful pictures of the city, they can, uh, contact Victor or Linda to submit those. Councilman Echus?
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone have a great Independence Day weekend.
Councilman Kishati?
I think we, we gathered that, so.
Yeah. Did we go over anything else tonight?
Media questions, Bill. You have five minutes.
Which.
Yeah.
Bill's had a long day already.
Thank you. I, I guess this is for Tim. Um, did, did I understand you to say that when the roof gets replaced by whomever at McCroy's, that the, it has to be preceded by the abatement of asbestos and lead?
Uh, I didn't say that, the, the environmental study said that. The environmental study was done by the city.
Uh-huh. Is that, if, if it turns out that the, the way it works out, that, um, John Helfrich's people do this, or have somebody do it, would, would that be enforced or that would be required to be?
That seems all on the table right now as far as what we're discussing. I, I, I can't answer that question. I think that's all gonna go into negotiations with the city, city council.
Okay. Regarding the, um, the authorization of Tom to, um, do the paperwork for the declaration of taking, will it require a new vote next time or at some future point to, to actually authorize him to file?
No. I mean, the, the, the resolution they did tonight just, uh, authorized me to prepare the paperwork with the filing not to occur prior to Ju- uh, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. So the way that resolution is, that was passed, is drafted, um, to me, it's, that's the earliest we could, that I would be authorized to file the eminent domain paperwork.
Okay, well, what then would trigger you filing that? Is, is that gonna be your, up to your discretion, or?
Uh, what I, Bill, what I anticipate, and I don't want to speak for council at this juncture, uh, we're gonna be back here July twelfth, um, and I'm gonna anticipate council is gonna want an update as to where things are at with that building, and I think that's gonna play a significant role in what happens after July twelfth.
In other words, you think you'll, you'll have your marching orders, so to speak?
That's what I'm anticipating.
Well, I think, um, I don't want to speak for everybody on council, but, but I think that everybody on council would much rather, um, see this transaction done, um, outside of eminent domain happening, you know? So I don't think that's the direction that council wants to go, but we voted for the resolution tonight to have the process ready to go for our solicitor if need be. In the event that the building owners don't follow through, you know, with their end of the bargain, which, um, you know, as we've seen in the past, has happened numerous times. So, you know, this was kind of our way of making sure that, that we, um, stay on that.
When you say numerous times, you mean with this particular, um, owner in, in this?
No, I just mean over the years that they haven't really.
That's what I mean, with this, with this particular owner of, of this building.
Well, I didn't know who owned it before this, so yes.
Yeah, okay. And Tom, maybe for Tom, what, if, if it turns out that, um, things proceed as expected with this, these appraisals, possibly one, possibly two appraisals, who, who would do the negotiations? Would you talk to their, to Tom for, or what?
Yeah, at the end, at the end of the day, as an attorney, I don't, you know, I don't have authority to just unilaterally make that decision. Um, obviously, any type of discussions, you know, between council, we have to, we have to speak with our respective clients uh, as far as, hey, this is the offer, this is what they're willing to do. Uh, you know, on the day-to-day items such as that, obviously, I'll, you know, I'll be talking with Omar relative to that, and, uh, ultimately, any final decision, um, on, you know, the final price, it's gonna have to be approved by the city.
Would, would that need to be approved like in a, or ratified in a public meeting, I guess?
I would imagine so.
Yeah, yes, it would. Cause obviously, you're gonna be dealing with public funds at that point as well.
And, and how, how would it be paid, like, where, paid with what source of funds, I guess?
I'd imagine a check from the general fund.
It would be general fund or, or unreserved fund, which is an dwindling fund.
Regarding the, the, the broadband, broadband issue, where in the city, if, if any places, is broadband access lacking?
I don't think we can answer that really until we, uh, see the mapping that, that they're, that they've done.
I think it's important to see that, to see where, what locations they may have indicated. And perhaps it's not lacking per se, but perhaps it's inadequate for the services that are being done there, whether it's business, uh, business and or just, uh, I'm sure that there are different times too throughout the community where five, six, seven o'clock, I'm su- I mean, I have a smart TV, I'm sure there are other homes in the area where connection is difficult because you just have a lot of, a lot of traffic on the broadband at, at that one time. So I think it's important to see that kind of before we make any real determination as far as what we're looking to do, or if anything.
And, and if I understand right, I'm not sure who would answer this, maybe Tom, um, they're asking you to spend only on potential projects that affect city residents, right? They're not asking you to support something out in Junieta Township?
As I understand this, and council, gentlemen can correct me if I'm wrong, um, they're basically looking for, um, contributions, not just from the city, but surrounding municipalities as well. Uh, obviously, anything that the city would be contributing would be focused on city residents and city, you know, city areas.
I think that was made explicit, I think.
That's my understanding.
If I understood Jim Foreman correctly, that was made pretty explicit that any, any funds that we would contribute would stay in the city.
Okay, that's what I was trying to.
And, uh, yeah, and used, and I don't remember the term that he used, but in conjunction with funds from like the county, the school district.
Um, is it, this, I suppose, is for Omar, is there any possibility that, um, the, Jim Foreman was talking about postponing th- this kind of spending until they can get projects together. Is there any, any potential for delaying it so long that you would have difficulty spending the money in an alternative way if it doesn't get used for this thing? Because of the, because of the A R P limits of two years?
From what I heard him say, uh, he wants, or Allegheny Broadband would like five point seven million dollars approximately, um, to do projects related to enhancing broadband within the city. Uh, we're under, if, if we're, and we're using, uh, A R P funds, they are restricted. Um, certainly, the broadband is a, uh, is a, uh, a, a eligible expense, but everything has to be done by the end of twenty twenty-four and paid for by the end of twenty twenty-six, so we, we still have to work within those restrictions.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and my, my question is, what if, what if they have a project, what, what if the total projects they propose to you, um, amounts to three million dollars? um amounts to three million dollars, but you've, you're running up against the end of twenty twenty-three, and there's no time to figure out somewhere else to spend that money?
I think that he said, correct me if I'm wrong, that he would, I mean, we haven't taken any action. And I think that they said that they would submit specific projects with presumably, at that point in time, a bill associated with them, um, and I think their estimate was fifteen percent, something like that.
Yeah.
Fifteen percent of the pro- approximately.
Yeah. Yeah. But I mean, I, from what I, if I understood it correctly, and I guess we have time to figure out if I, if I did or not, it sounds like they're gonna submit a list of projects at, with bills attached to them, so that, I mean, I don't think there would be a risk of that money then.
What what I'm got, what I'm getting at is, do you think they'll submit them soon enough? That if it's not, if they don't use all the money, if they don't ask you to use all your money, all that fifteen percent, that you will still have time to figure out an alternative way to spend it before the A R P deadline?
Bill, I have confidence in the gentlemen that were here that 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 would be submitted in a timely manner.
Okay.
The question seems like a big what-if. Like, and I mean, there's ways around that, we could put a deadline on if we don't get requests for broadband projects past a certain date, then we reallocate that money elsewhere, so.
Um. Oh, and and when, when are you expecting? I'm not sure what I meant by this, but when when are you expecting that group to get back to you on, on more specifics, is that something they expect soon, or?
Well, I'm hoping to have the map or the study that they did, I mean, it's in 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 an email format, so I'm hoping to have something by the end of the week, which I would hope actually sooner than that, but I think that we could have that information readily available for us to digest it and ask questions.
Okay. Um, Rebecca, regarding the demolition ordinance, um, what what's, what's on the books now for for regulating demolition?
We have some, Public Works has some uh requirements for protection of um public property, and we really just, we we didn't really have any regulations on the books.
Okay. Uh, and Omar, regarding the A R P listening sessions, that, are there guidelines, more more like um layman's terms guidelines available now, or will there be before the before those listening sessions, so that people will know what they can reasonably propose?
Yeah, there's guidelines available whenever the um, it's called the interim final rule was released probably about a month ago now. Uh, yeah, all those guidelines are in there, and there's various frequently asked question uh formats out there that can be accessed at uh I think it's the Pennsylvania League of Cities, National League of Cities, a variety of other uh places on the internet.
Okay.
Are we, food for thought, and I think we somehow this may have been a private conversation, but are we able to have someone do a presentation that evening as far as what are eligible expenses with these dollars?
Yeah, the discussion was that we would start the meeting off with a list of explaining to the public why we're there, we're we're seeking input from the the community, so that we are trying to get as uh many ideas and suggestions as possible, so that ultimately, what we do is reflective of the community's desire, but to talk about these are the, what has to be done, these are things that have to be met, so that you know, that doesn't do anybody any good to raise hopes or or talk about things that are not gonna be able to be funded with that, and even pointing out that if someone makes a suggestion, that we may have to say, you know, that's a great idea, but it really would not be eligible for funding under this plan, so. But yeah, we, I think the whole idea is we'd start that whole evening off with with the discussion about that.
Okay, and then, final question is, um, Omar, the, the, moving from seven point two five as an assumed interest rate for pensions to seven, like, over how long a period of time would that, that take place?
Well, we would look to do that in the next round of, in this actuarial period. Um, so we'd be moving from seven and a quarter to seven, which is really much closer to reality uh than seven and a quarter, because you're assuming something's gonna happen, but it's never happening, cause the history shows a much lower return. Um, it's kind of wishful thinking, and it's not a prudent and responsible uh way to move forward.
Do you, do you happen to know what the, like, recent years have have been hovering around?
Uh, I think we looked at the history of about thirty-year history, it was in the, in the, in the low five percent. But again, I think we underachieved. I think we underachieved in our um return on investment, so that's one of the reasons we made a change in uh investment managers.
Okay, thank you.
Meeting is adjourned.